Mr. Long is supposedly on his way. And Mr. Haney will not be here tonight. He had a medical emergency with his mother come up about four o'clock. I'd like to have a moment of silence for that. All right. I'd like to welcome everyone here for the season for this five thirty session of the budget work session. This time, they have a dehumidification update from Drew.
We sent everybody an update on where we stand with some attached in the emails. We had to cancel the IFB. We had due technical and timing issues. We got asked the quotes to replace the compressors for the Aon unit here. Two local companies don't perform that service, so we reached out to a couple of companies in Richmond. One gave us a quote for budgetary purposes, a little over twenty-four thousand, but they were not in their service area. And Hobbs and Associates, who originally did the Aons here, gave us a quote to replace them with twenty-four nine twenty. And they do have the compressors in stock and they and we are in their service area, so they will be able to perform it if the board wishes to move forward with that. Just let us know if you how you want to proceed or if you want to hold off. We've spoken with Mr. Haney and relied on his expertise, and I believe Luttrell and I will agree that he was comfortable with moving forward with replacing the compressor.
To get action from the board.
We do. We well, we had told the board that we would bring that information back to you all for your consideration since we had canceled the invitation for bid. So yeah, if we could get action from the board to move forward, I don't know if you'd want to wait for Mr. Long or proceed forward.
This is within our small purchase policy that we wouldn't actually have to fit it anymore than what you've done.
We would need up to the two estimates, which we had received two estimates, but one of those is not, they don't service this area, so.
I'm glad.
I moved that we go ahead and do Hobbs and Associates at twenty-four nine twenty. We're getting into humidity season and we don't want to make it any worse than we already got.
I'll second.
You seconded?
Yes.
All right, both in a second. Any other discussion on it? If not, all in favor, let them know I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, thank you.
All right, the budget work session. I'll turn that right over to Mr. Tadlock.
All right, the board had set up a budget work session this afternoon at five thirty. And I talked to Mr. Haney, and we did have several departments that went to present some information to the board. So we had asked for the sheriff's office and the library to come in today. We can get started with with that, or if the board has any specific questions about the budget, we can try and answer those for the board too.
All right. Sheriff. Sheriff on our first.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff.
All right, good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman. I don't think I've ever said that before. So good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman and board members. I'm sure you have my request. I submitted in January. And there were some larger requests that I wanted to just go over with the board and answer any questions that you may have. Let me get on this side. There we go. So one of them is the adoption of a pay scale, which we've never had at the sheriff's office. We've kind of gone by what the state does or comp board does, and then we just kind of shoot from the hip on what we think a officer with no training or one with three years or five years or et cetera has. And we try to match that as best we can. And also surrounding counties have increased their starting salary substantially above ours now. Richmond County is at forty-three thousand. Westmoreland's at forty-five thousand. The town of Warsaw is at forty-two thousand. And we're at thirty-nine thousand, four hundred, five hundred, whatever the salary study was last year. So we're going to be way behind the A-ball if we don't try to do something about. So this pay plan incorporates that as well. That we have proposed our starting salary at forty-four thousand without training. And then there are steps in there to calculate years of service. If they come from another agency, we can incorporate to try to be competitive in paying that individual as well. So if there's any questions on that, I think you all have that in your board doc.
Y'all have any questions?
None at this time, no.
What does it do? Are you going to deal? How you deal with existing employees? So there's power compression.
Okay, so Major Alan Garland's here. This is his brainchild, but we took the base pay of forty-four thousand and then calculated their years of service based on that to give a current salary. What we also did was I know currently there's a five percent pay raise proposed and a four percent pay raise proposed at the general assembly. We took the five percent and looked at the numbers versus the pay scale, and we've asked to fund the larger of the two for each individual employee. And I think I don't have that with me, but there were more employees that would benefit from the five percent than they would from the salary that we created using this scale. So everybody would would come up in years. So the compression hopefully would not be there. And we don't we don't see any compression issues based on this scale. And keep in mind, if whatever pay raise the general assembly passes, if this board passes, you know, you'll get that reimbursement.
What is the comp board salary for starting deputy?
Thirty-five thousand and change. And then the county adds the four thousand to get them to thirty-nine.
So we're going to do a supplement on the supplement base.
Well, you can say that, or you could you could rework it and just do one large supplement. I think there's also a bill in the House and in Senate to start the salary from comp board at forty-two thousand. So if that passes, then the county will benefit from that as well.
Is that a bill or a budget amendment, a part of the budget?
Probably budget.
The problem is the budget's only good for two years, so.
Yeah.
What is the Oh, who have some? What is the ratio they're using for numbers for deputies per person?
It's one, one deputy per fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
Population.
I was thinking it was twelve or fifteen hundred.
So we're a couple of positions heavy on the county side versus comp board. But it's we're very close. I would almost say half and half, but we're a little heavy.
Those many counties are at the comp board staffing number.
No, especially the larger counties.
Just like school systems, nobody could teach with the schools. The teachers are authorized by the state either.
Correct. All right, so any other questions on that line item?
Do you have a form of that scale down that you could give? I mean, not today.
Yes.
Get it to us in the next couple of days.
Yes, sir.
And it breaks down.
I can email it to you all tomorrow.
That'd be great.
We got we got something, and I wasn't sure what that was.
Yeah, that's so on that sheet you just held up, to the very far right would be final salary. So in the green, they benefit higher with five percent. In the yellow, they benefit higher with the salary scale. Kind of fairly young as in years of experience department, as you can see.
I noticed that.
So there's, you know, through the last six or seven years, there's been a lot of turnover.
You're the second highest year we've been here.
Well, that's if you add those two together, I've got two in the extra, so we should be Kevin and I should be right at twenty-two, almost twenty-three years.
And you're twenty by this and Kevin at twenty-two. And what does then, what is a new deputy? You hire a deputy who's not trained by DC or not certified by DCH yet. What is their starting salary? Forty-four?
That would be the forty-four.
All right. Deputy then gets certified. What happens to their salary then?
So.
Is that years of experience or is it just a flat whatever?
Currently, we add, we've been adding nine point three one percent, which was an old amount that you added to one-year anniversary from the comp board. Since the county does a supplement, the comp board salaries usually don't change. We use the county money to offset and move money around. It's much easier for us to do that. Well, probably with forty-four thousand, we will let whatever pay raise comes along, you know, affect that salary. So there won't be any increase based on being certified anymore at that forty-four thousand.
Is the master deputy program still in existence?
We have one. That's one thing I'm going to check into and see if we can continue to do more. They had they defunded that a while back.
They they defunded the police, right?
It's well, that was a long time ago before defunded became popular. I'm not sure if they have refunded that or not.
Well, they have master programs for other constitutional officers. Why were y'all defunded? Before your time, I'm sure.
I guess we had the most employees and sheriff seemed to get hit first through comp board.
Constitutional officers, constitutional officers, the fifth.
Right.
Was that that increase was like around nine percent once it got?
It was. The master deputy increase was equivalent to a sergeant increase.
Chairman, if you have you calculated, John, if you went with this proposed pay scale that you got, how much would that increase your budget this year?
Versus the five percent?
Well, we didn't. I don't think I did versus five percent. Just the salary scale alone looks at, and this is full-time only, a total of seventy-four thousand, two hundred and six.
Right.
Now, part-time's hard to figure. They they have a maximum they can work per year, which is fourteen hundred and forty hours.
Or thirty-two hours max.
Well, it's hundred and twenty hours.
Your valor, so they're different potentially.
Yeah. So we figured all of the part-time salaries on here at their maximum, but we currently don't have anyone that works maximum. You know, we have a part-time deputy that comes very close, but all the core bailiffs, that comes out of different line item.
Yep.
My accreditation manager, cleaning services, part-time dispatcher, they don't come close to fourteen hundred and forty hours. So that twenty-six thousand, four twenty-three for part-time is a maximum in case they did. But, you know, two, maybe three part-time people are early social security, so they can only make so much. Ones on disability can only make so much, so they're never going to get fourteen hundred and forty hours.
Your accreditation manager, is that toward getting fully accredited or is that just meeting current standards?
That is both. So we had our assessment unofficially. We look okay. We go to Richmond in two weeks to get a vote from the commission, which they do not anticipate a problem, but I'll wait until we get the official vote. So the accreditation manager then transforms from getting the accreditation to keeping it, which is actually harder to do than than actually getting it.
And how many sheriff's department do you know, or if you're aware of, are accredited in state of Michigan?
I don't know. No, it's low. Maybe in the thirties, maybe.
Is Laxton still accredited?
Yes, and Westmoreland, yes.
Lot of paperwork, but.
It is, but we've already found out that how much it helps.
Yeah. Having policies and procedures are very helpful.
Yes. So the the next large request was additional overtime. We for as long as I can remember have been using comp time. And what we learned in lawful employment in twenty twenty-one under the code section forty dash one, forty point one dash twenty-nine only allows departments with one hundred or more law enforcement officers to use comp time. Well, there was a big question about, okay, what about below one hundred? And the attorney could not answer that, but gave his opinion that we need to pay it out if we have it on the books and do not, you know, use comp time anymore. So I think we we have offset payout, which was right around twenty thousand dollars this year fiscal year to eliminate comp time. I've got enough money to offset that amount in my budget, but overtime before that and paying out comp time before that and moving forward, I'm going to be way over this year. So we are estimating that additional thirty-five thousand on top of what I have now, which is fifty-five thousand, I believe, should put us around ninety thousand, and that should cover hopefully a year's worth of overtime.
Is that going to then next year drop down some?
If we come in low, then I'll certainly drop it down to where I think we're going to be comfortable. It's, you know, it's easy for my detectives, admin staff to take a day off. It's it's the people on schedule that if I if you give somebody off, you got to have someone else come in to work. So it's difficult to get those hours worked out.
This is law. We don't want to be on the wrong side of. I remember Henry Hudson held the city of Richmond liable when they didn't pay overtime. That was overtime versus comp time.
Right.
Because you got the federal Fair Labor Standards Act, but you have the Virginia law, which is Henry Hudson said, yeah, you got a federal law, but you got a Virginia one you got to follow.
Yeah, my understanding is you follow the one that's more advantageous for the employee.
And Richmond paid seven point one million dollars extra because.
To find that out, yeah. I don't want to pay that much.
No.
Any questions on overtime? There's an additional request for twenty thousand for courtroom security. I have hired an extra bailiff this fiscal year, so that gives us four bailiffs every court day, unless the chief bailiff determines we don't need four. There were we're still pulling from the the court security fund, but I don't want to drain that, which we're going to do in two or three years if we don't increase county contributions.
How many do you need courtroom security when you're running both district court and circuit court?
Seven to eight. So when we run both those courts, myself, the major, the captains over here, we may pull a road unit if we have enough on the on the road. Typically, we don't.
I mean, the only savings you have is the person that's there at the front, but you still got to have courtroom numbers.
Yes, that's correct. Especially with a jury, because we're moving the jury back and forth, and the way we're doing it now with COVID is, you know, we only pull the jury twenty or thirty at a time. So we're moving those out, moving the next group in, and it's it's not like it used to be. Just hitting the the higher amounts. If there's any on here that you want to talk about, please, please let me know which which line item. Moving to page two, seven thousand two is the line item. It's eighteen thousand, five hundred in capital outlay. As you know, we have a battery backup that runs the entire building, whether there's seventy-two batteries in that. So they're past needing replacement. I don't think that eighteen thousand, five hundred is now going to cover it. I could come back in a couple of weeks with another estimate if that would help.
What do the battery backup?
So they back up everything in the building until the generator starts.
How long does it take the generator to start?
Well, if it starts, which it normally does, anywhere from fifteen, twenty, thirty seconds. Depending on when it detects.
That's like a thirty-minute backup.
Yeah, it's not very hot. Well, it could be thirty minutes. I'm not sure of the length of it. So it powers receptacles, computers and things. It does not power.
Saves data on.
HVAC, yes.
So I want to make sure we had a generator. I certainly thought we did.
Oh, yes. No, that's that works fine. So I think we'll keep that in there if it's okay, but I will try to get a updated quote within next week or two. And then the last eight thousand six is twenty-six thousand for yearly maintenance on the new records management system. That's additional money to what's in my line item now. Maintenance is going to run about thirty-seven to thirty-eight thousand a year, which was in the contract. That is all the larger requests that I have. Be glad to answer any more questions or come back to another meeting.
Are you having trouble getting ammunition?
We were. It seems to be coming in a little bit faster now. The trouble we're having is buying shotguns. Believe it or not. So we've had to change the model that we wanted from a marine coat, kind of like a stainless steel, you know, these these weapons stay primarily in the back of the cruisers.
Yeah.
You know, heat, cold.
I'll have you miss love come back.
Come on through, Mr. Long. We're having to change to just the the Black Parkerized finish, and we'll have to clean them more and, you know, keep them serviceable. But they're more readily available than special coated weapons.
I have one more question for you. You can you can answer it if you wish.
Okay.
Revolve involves the unfortunate shooting in Texas. It's been reported that law enforcement was outside for a long time. Can, if you want to answer it in the event, God forbid we don't have it, what is the sheriff's office response in the event? Do you wait for people are, everything I've seen, column by and change the dynamics.
Correct.
Instead of waiting for SWAT, if one goes in, one goes in. Ideally, you want at least four. But I mean, if you want to answer that question.
I can tell you, we are trained and I currently have, as soon as you get there, you go in.
I want to reassure the citizens.
Yes, and, you know, do your best to notify dispatch what you see, what's going on, if you can.
What I read didn't sound good, but I remember the Parkland shooting, the SRO didn't go in, and that didn't look good.
We're fortunate and thankful from for the board funding this, that we have an SRO in every school.
I would not want to.
SRO in every school, for three schools.
Is there interagency planning for this? I mean, other law, I know you got counties, but you got state, B M R C. Now, I used to call them the game department, now the department. Well, is because I think that might have been some of the issues with the border police coming in. I mean, is there any kind of cross-training to make sure everybody understands how to work together?
I have not attended the training. We've held training ourselves.
Yeah.
But no, that that would be a a large round top training that should take place.
Don't ever want to have it, but if you don't plan for it.
Correct.
You know what you do, where you are.
Right. And I don't know their policy. I don't know other agencies. What are they going to do? If state police arrives first, what are what are they going to do? I don't know. Do they wait? Do they go in?
That's something that everybody needs.
That's a good question.
Again, let's let's. We don't want it, but let's plan for the worst-case scenario. I know you got EMS. That's a different ballgame. You got it in control of the scene. We don't have tactical EMS yet.
No.
We don't want it either. We don't want you have to go in, but that tactical EMS is a totally different ballgame. Thank you, Sheriff.
You're welcome.
So, thank you, Sheriff.
You're welcome.
Great texture here. Director Jane, blue.
Good evening. Thank you so much for listening to me this evening. I actually brought a little comic. I'll pass it around so you can read it, which was very appropriate. It just came to me today, and it's all about why we need public libraries, so I thought I would share that.
Thank you.
Mr. Tadlock and Vice Chairman Jett and the other supervisors, Mr. Brand, Mr. Long, Mr. Tomlin, thank you for listening to me this evening and giving me this opportunity to address you about our budget for and our request for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. As you know, our request this year is a hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and seven dollars. This constitutes an eleven percent increase over the previous fiscal year and includes a three percent increase in staff wages and a sixteen percent increase in overall operating expenses due to the increased cost in doing business. I want to thank you for working so diligently in increasing our allocation annually. Even during the height of the pandemic, you increased our budget, allowing us to address the challenges in increase that we would have with the minimum wage in Virginia, allowing us to remain competitive in the job market. But the challenge still remains, as there are retail and restaurant chains in surrounding towns offering fifteen dollars an hour, while the library remains at twelve dollars an hour for new employees. And for some of them, I don't even have them at that yet. They're at eleven dollars an hour. I'm going to have to make those changes in January of twenty twenty-three. As you know, the state requirement for county funding is two-thirds of my operating budget. I've tried for the past three years to operate without increasing that by no more than three percent and find that this year three percent won't meet the demands of my expenses. As a result of the increase in gas prices, the increase in the cost of our grounds maintenance, and the increase in supplies, I can't stay at that level any longer. This year also marks a large step in the right direction because I believe that I've been incredibly conservative in asking, largely due to the pandemic. But I've also had to take into consideration, as I shared, the increased cost of doing business and the need to give my employees raises and meet the minimum wage requirement. We also have a twenty-five-year-old building that's going to need two new air-conditioning units, a new roof in the next five to ten years, an air filtration system and a new mobile library. My mobile library is on its last leg, basically. This past year, our Board of Trustees, whom I'd like to acknowledge, there's many of them sitting back behind me, I'm sorry, adopted a five-year plan. The fiscally responsible plan includes fundraising for a new mobile library, an asset to our county. Our current mobile library had over fifty-five hundred dollars in repairs last summer, and at that time, we were informed that we can no longer get the parts to replace it or much of the operating system. Our mechanic actually scoured junkyards and made calls to the Ford dealers in the area, trying to find the parts that we needed. He finally retrofitted what he could and told me we'd probably get about three years more of service out of it before we can we will have to replace it. The cost to replace it is going to run me between a hundred and sixty-two thousand and a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We will have to do some of that with fundraising. But in order to do that, I need to know that my operating expenses are covered. Another part of our long-range plan is to put a small pocket park in the back of the library with picnic tables, a small gazebo, and perhaps a story walk trail. We're excited about the opportunity to offer an outdoor space where people can gather for movies, concerts, and other programs, as well as being able to expand library programs. Again, we are going to need to fundraise for that reality, which is why it's so important that my operating expenses are covered. If you help me with that, I can make the our annual appeal and the gifts that we receive stretch a little bit better to cover the things that we dream about. A copy of our long-range plan is available on the website. This year, I will receive a four percent increase from the state, although that is still a decrease of almost nine percent from the amount they gave me in twenty twenty. The state library calculates their allocations by determining the average amount the county funds. The state library calculates their allocations by determining the average amount the county funds a library for the past three years. So this year, they will consider 2019, 2020 and 2021. Which averages out to an allocation from you of fifty-one percent of my annual operating budget. My annual operating budget totaled three hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Your allocation of two-thirds should have been two hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. Each year, we have worked together to increase the amount you give, and I am confident we can continue to do so. And we get busier every year. You can tell from my monthly reports that we have increased demand for our meeting room space. We have increased demand for the help that people need with computers, with technology and with all of the other services that we provide. We don't charge to use our meeting room unless you are a for-profit organization and then we only charge fifty dollars for three hours. There's no place else in the county where you can get a meeting room space that inexpensively. We don't charge anymore this year, as we did for the past five years, for our faxing, for our copying. For any of the services that we provide. And yet, our bills have increased for all of those services by at least seven percent this year alone. During the pandemic, we chose to delete the fines that we place on overdue books. And we are not going to reinstate that practice. Most of the public libraries in surrounding counties went fine-free and we have found that not only does that promote goodwill. But it eliminates the barrier for those who stay away from the library, even if they only owe ten cents. We still do charge for lost items. And we charge for multimedia and DVD that are extremely late. Because those items sometimes cost me in the neighborhood of a hundred dollars to replace. FY twenty-two, twenty-three budget includes a ten percent increase in books and programs, a four percent increase in technology. And as, as mentioned in my original letter, we are now including depreciation in our budget. Which is an increase of thirty-two hundred dollars a year or thirty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars annually. We are in the process of working out how this will be allocated in light items such as, such as technology upgrades, building maintenance and replacements of systems. I also want to take a moment to address the fifteen thousand dollar grant that you all gave me for my generator last year. While I did inform the state that you gave us this funding, it is not counted as part of the money allocated to us. On an annual basis, as it came from ARPA funding and not the tax base. I actually sent a letter to the state letting them know of your generosity and asking if that amount could be rolled into the average given. Since public libraries in Virginia were designated an essential service in July of 2020. You can be rest assured that helping to fund our generator went a long way in showing your support. I also wanted to share a few statistics with you. We saw a twenty-one percent increase in library usage between 2020 and 2021. As well as a nineteen percent increase in the use of our public computers. Our wifi is available and accessible twenty-four seven. And this year, we purchased two wifi extenders. So that patrons can have access no matter where they are parked outside of the building, including sitting in our picnic tables out back. We've had a twenty-eight percent increase in request for information. And are currently looking at purchasing an online chat program so that we can answer online questions during our operating hours. Rural communities with public libraries have higher graduation rates and longer lives, among many other benefits. Field research conducted by rural libraries and social well-being. Demonstrated that rural communities use their library as a social, cultural and educational anchor. Allowing for multi-dimensional social well-being impacts that have broad and deep impact. We see this in our bookshop, run by volunteers whose average age is between seventy-five to eighty years. One of my volunteers is ninety-nine this year and opens that store every Wednesday morning at ten AM. The impact of our services to the community is far-reaching. We have numerous patrons who come just to sit and talk and read the newspaper. We are their social gathering place. Our student library access card, which I am very proud of, has opened the door to all of our public school students. And we hope to roll this out to the homeschool students in the next year. Students use their ID number, the same one they use to get a school lunch, to check out up to five books at a time. No need for a card and the books can be returned to the school, school libraries and we will pick them up. Partnering with our local YMCA, elementary school and Boys and Girls Club. We are proud to bring our summer reading program to a wide group of children with programs at all three locations. As well as special programs hosted this summer by the Reedville Fisherman's Museum, the Tidewater Oyster Gardeners Association. And the Virginia Marine Science Institute. There is truly something planned for every day of the week, from June third through August tenth of this year, including virtual programs. All of that money comes from extra money that we get from the friends of the library. It does not support my operating cost. As I shared with you at the last meeting, our mobile library has an aggressive schedule this year. With stops in Calio, Reedville, Burgess, local preschools, Glimmers and Blenders, summer school at the elementary school. And more places this summer. And some of those will be continued in the fall. Through a grant, I was able to purchase a book drop for Calio. I'm looking for a location to place it. And as soon as the park is built there, it will have a permanent home. We offer remote book drops in Wocomico Church and at Lillian's in Burgess and we pick up those books every week. The impact of your public library is far and wide in Northumberland County. Your financial support makes my job easier and we continue to search for ways that we can support the community that we serve. I'm proud of the work that we have done and will continue to do. And I know that with your financial support. We can implement more far-reaching programs that will have a positive impact for years to come. At this time, I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
More questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for your time.
What do you have next? I don't know if the board has any specific questions on anything. We did advertise for the budget public hearing for fiscal year twenty-three, uh, next Thursday at seven PM. So unless the board has anything, I had not prepared for, to discuss anything further on it.
Well, you have a closed meeting though.
Yeah, as far as related to the, the budget, but yes, sir, we do have a closed meeting.
Yeah. Anything on the budget that I don't want to bring up?
Not at this time. I don't have any to. Not at this time. I don't have anything.
I have one thing to bring up. Since we have the superintendent Jason here, it's a question I thought about. The salary increase is five percent this year. Is that right? That's what you have in your budget?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Tomlin. Uh, the budget as presented includes the five percent plus the step.
All right. But is that composite index basis, is not requesting any additional county funds? Doesn't look like there's any compo, you, your composite in Lancaster's worth now.
Yes.
But we're in the low seventies. By normal, we don't get, you can get a five percent, but we've got to make up the difference in the, of that. So is, what's going on with that this year?
Um, the big difference this year is like the state increase in money, the, the additional money that's coming from the state and federal government is making up the difference in the budget. And that's why there's no additional local money requested this year.
This year?
Yes.
But next year, they'll have, we'll have to make up the difference of what they give us on composite index.
Uh, I don't know if you met, to make up a difference. Um, if, if, if the, if there's a proposed raise next year, we'd have to see how that would equate to what the state was giving us. And whether we'd need, ask for an increase from local funds. Unless the state reduced, well, it's over a biennium. So whatever they approve this year will be over a biennium. So we'll have two years of that.
Well, the federal money runs out in twenty twenty-four.
Uh, for the SRO money and stuff like that, yes. We haven't been using any of that money for reoccurring costs. All that's been applied to one-time costs.
All those, when you have a salary, you put it up, you got to make it up. You got to pay for it.
Yes, sir. We're not using, uh, any of SRO money or any of those grant funds to increase salaries. That's all coming from additional state revenue.
And how many, uh, positions does the state consider you to have? Not how many you actually have, but how, how many are SOA positions?
Uh, SOQ positions versus just. I don't, I don't know particularly that number right offhand. How many percentage of our employees are considered SOQ? Um, I do know.
Put that down as a question.
The majority of the teachers and stuff are all considered SOQ would be some of the support staff and things that aren't really covered under those, uh, costs.
But no school system would, would teach with what the state deems appropriate.
Oh, there's no way possible for any, I mean, almost every school system spends somewhere between fifty or even two-hundred percent. West Point used to spend two-hundred percent over SOQs. So it, it all depends and, uh, it varies considerably from district to district on what percentage is, um, covered by SOQs versus what they have to make up. It's kind of the same way in the sheriff's department.
Oh, I know.
They have the same, same kind of thing. They have the, this, the comp board employees versus all the other deputies that are hired locally.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
There's none.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have anything on the budget? I got one other thing I'd like to bring up then. It's not concerning the budget at this time. I would like to see the county's just seek proposals, information. Whatever you want to call it, on a radio system as they were talking from another vendor, other than just one. I may have done a great much research on this, talked to people, did a lot of reading on it. We could possibly be looking at less money to put our own regional system in. Same type of system. But I don't know, y'all might see a different, but with so many unanswered questions. And the other ones at actual cost. Well, since the sheriff is there and he was heading that committee, what process did y'all use to, uh? How many possible vendors or process? What did y'all do to come up with your recommendation?
So we went off the federal engineering report. They gave us, um, information on the three options we wanted. And if we'll go over real quick, one was to upgrade our current system to a P twenty-five digital. But that kept us in VHF. The next option was a UHF conventional, which is channels. So we, you know, we'd have four, five, six channels, whatever we wanted. And the third system joined the regional system, which means there are some components that we didn't have to buy. And trunking takes channels and splits them in half. So you've got talk paths. And then you can have thousands of talk routes that we've never used, but in a regional system, you need trunking because you can get busy. And with a conventional system, if one person's talking on the channel and you need to get on, you're not going to get on. Or you're going to step over them, they're going to step over you. We felt that joining the regional system and the capabilities that it has was the best route for Northumberland today and fifteen years.
Are you aware of any other regional group at the present time we could join?
No. No, I mean, Mr. Jet, you can create your own.
Yeah.
But you'd have to have another partner to go in with you. And depending on the system, it's going to be just as expensive.
The only potential would be possibly Richmond and Lancaster coming in together. Like I think I read off the top of my head.
Well, Richmond County is a subscriber to the Upper Middle Peninsula Regional System.
Okay.
So they're paying per radio per month, but they have no infrastructure, no towers.
They're not part of it, but they use it.
They use it as, right, they pay rent.
Gotcha.
In other words. So yeah, I mean, it's possible to, to get another quote. Up to the board.
Did, when you get this fresh proposal, did y'all tell them what you wanted, needed, or did they suppose on what they got and had?
Are you talking about federal or Harris?
Harris, the one that did the proposal first of all.
So we wanted to join their system.
Right.
So we have to use what they say we can use to join. They came in with a coverage map of how many towers we, we would need. Um, I actually advocated to add a fourth one to cover Block Point. Because I didn't feel that the coverage was necessary. I mean, was adequate. So we needed a fourth tower to be necessary to cover down there. But all the components, as far as infrastructure. We need to go with what they say in order, so to work with the region. So, no, we didn't say we want this, this and this. We said, what's it going to cost for us to join?
But would you buy a car without an engine in it?
No, I'd, I'd have to push it, I guess.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's amazing what I know. Some of them, some, when the microwaves weren't included in the base and nobody gave a firm price on it. And that's the main backbone. It ain't going to work without them, is it?
No.
But why wasn't that included on a proposal?
Uh, it's a different proposal. It's a separate proposal from a different company. So the proposal you got was for the radio equipment.
Well, we had some other proposals from other companies, different things that they don't do themselves.
What, what was that?
I mean, the backbone of a whole operation for the work was not included in the price.
Of the radio equipment?
Yeah, the radio.
Yes, sir. That's right. Cause they don't.
It's like you buying a car. Man say your car would go, if you want an engine, that'll be another price. Well, fine, I know the microwave's cost money.
Right.
But that should have been, if they subcontracted or whoever they do. I mean, how can you, I just don't see anybody can even consider anything when you don't have a firm price of, I mean, wasn't it a million dollars?
Half a million.
Did you get a, a quote or anything from them, from whomever the microwave company would be?
Not an official, but I've got, we had an estimate.
But one was a hundred thousand, another one was a hundred twenty-five thousand each. That's what I like to see is to get some firm pricing with somebody and then come back with a firm price.
Well, that's going to be difficult. Cause we don't know what we want.
Cause you don't what?
We don't know what we want. And we, we know we want to join the Middle Peninsula Regional System. We know.
For me, yeah, well, you tell them the same thing, that it doesn't have to be Harris is the only one controlling that, right, I guess?
Yes.
Thank you. But have you thought of starting your own regional system? Well, that's more Richmond County is not happening with it. They're looking to move elsewhere. Honestly, they said Harris, cause like you saying, the only ones around available to get on a regional system now. But, uh, and I'm anxious to, I don't know what their intentions are.
Yeah, it, it depends on what system you want. If you want to look at a trunk, another trunked regional system, that's going to be expensive. Very expensive.
Well, I don't know. I've been told that your own regional system would probably end up being cheaper than this one.
Is it a trunk system or are we doing conventional?
Same as this system.
Same, okay.
I mean, in the, just use the Northumberland Regional System.
Okay.
Northern, that, whatever you don't call it.
So what you're looking, what you're asking is something exactly or very comparable to the region.
Just to get, get some other prices out here. I mean, I would never vote in favor of anything, no matter how cheap it was, if you just got one bid on it, you're talking with that much money. And we've never done anything like that before.
Well, that, that's kind of w- when you join their system, that's sole proprietary, it is what it is. Uh, you know Motorola can't come in and bid to join the Harris system.
Right. I understand that. So you'd have, if you go another regional system, you'd have stuck your own.
Correct.
You could join, put another company to join them.
Some components may work, most of them are not. And that's where a P twenty-five comes in.
It's just, for me, apparently not just too many unanswered questions.
Okay.
And, uh, I'd like to see the board looking, looking to follow.
The board, i.e. me.
No, no, I'm talking to this board now.
Okay.
I mean, you've included it.
No, I don't, no.
Well, you know of any radio, other radio that does UHF?
Oh, yeah. Motorola, Kenwood.
But in your opinion, you think you went the right, right route?
In the committee's opinion, not just mine. We all voted unanimously that this is what we, what we presented is what we wanted. So it was a committee decision. We can, we can get proposals all you want. I just need to know.
If you want to put it that way, in your opinion, do you feel like this was a firm bid? Take a firm proposal figure.
I would have to say yes. I've, I've never dealt with Harris before, so I'd. I would have to say yes. I've I've never dealt with Harris before, so I, you know.
I mean, the price that they gave you, that four and a half million dollars, buy yourself three something that was like, if, there's so many if Lancaster does this.
Right.
Touchdown. But then microwaves were not included in their price. So you don't know what it's going to cost.
I can give you a rough estimate. No, I don't know, I don't have the exact figure, but.
I mean, one time, another night, it said a hundred thousand.
Per tower.
A hundred twenty-five.
Hmm. It depends on which microwave you buy.
Right.
But, you know, the the things we use now is a, is, I call them mini microwaves, a point-to-point, and they failed. Severe thunderstorm, the the windstorm we had when they blew the roof off the old school in Calio, we left out the sheriff's office, couldn't talk.
I know, I agree. It's, how many times has that happened?
Enough that I'm worried about.
That's, that's the kind of answer we need, if you're worried about something like that, we need to do something. I agree with you a hundred percent of that.
Okay, yeah, no, I mean.
I just want to make sure we do the right thing.
I.
I mean, at that expense, y'all are looking at three or four cents tax rate increase just to cover the radio system. Financing it for ten years, if you're using rough figures.
Hmm.
Oh.
I I can't imagine that a a trunk radio syst, a regional radio system, if we do our own, it's going to be any cheaper. I I, I'm not a radio salesman. Motorola has statistically been more expensive than any other radio that I've bought. Every time. So I'd be glad if it'll come in under that price.
They're just Motorola, the only other one that, you know.
That, that we.
You know of.
Yeah. I don't know, uh, Kenwood makes UHF systems. I don't know if they rise to the point of P twenty-five public safety compatible. We can ask the question. But um, if, let the board decide and then if I'm the one getting the the proposal, I need to know exactly what we want.
Well, we, what, that's definitely need to tell them what you want, not what they got to offer.
Well, it's easier when we're building our own, because we can say we want this coverage in these buildings.
Right.
What, what do you offer? And then we'll tell you.
Did the coverage look any better to you than what it was?
Yes.
Where?
A lot better. In building, um, outline areas to the.
Well, did you read, uh, I know they don't have a tower, but did you read Richmond County's concern over?
No.
They don't have coverage in buildings right in Warsaw.
Well, that, they don't, and then they shouldn't, because they're operating off towers in another county. Imagine we took all our.
Actually, they're not even considered a member, they're a subscriber.
Yeah. So I don't know how they came up with the coverage map that they used to buy in that system. I don't know what it looked like.
Yeah, I don't.
But.
But keep in mind, one thing in Richmond County, as a subscriber to the system and not having any towers in Richmond County, that system is a whole lot better than what they had with the old icon system. And that's why they went with that until they figured out what they wanted to do.
Right.
It was promised to be better from what I understand, up there to share and different ones up there, it is not better, and it's getting worse for some reason.
Well, they, they knew right up front that they needed to put a tower up.
Yeah, I mean, I was telling you, they did it with other towers.
Right, and uh.
Their decision.
Yeah.
They were, they were in a jam because their whole system was failing. And they come onboard with that system and they give them a whole lot better coverage than what they had.
And and this, and the new microwaves and all the equipment, theirs is getting ready to be updated, King, Queen, King and Queen, I just asking all of them. So basically, we are paying to update all their equipment so to match what they're going to put into a pump.
And how are we paying? Which, which line item?
Figured in the price. That's what, what they got for for Northumberland is new stuff, up to date tweeting and all that.
Hmm.
They don't have that. So they're going to, they got to make it work. It's all got to work together.
So what you're saying is that half a million dollar price tag includes upgrading the other microwaves as well?
I understand it, Red.
I don't, I don't have that information.
No. Did any of y'all read it that way? I mean, they got, didn't they say during their presentation? That they had to upgrade them because to make the two tweet, I think is the word, use, you get it?
They would have to upgrade the system.
They're going to have to upgrade their equipment.
But it wouldn't be on us. The only additional cost we have is if we went with Harris, is the first year buy-in was a hundred thousand or something like that, then it would drop to the twenty or whatever it was. That their first initial buy-in was larger because of the whatever, but I don't, then what I'm saying, it was five, you know, up to a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand per tower in the Foman County.
Per, per, right, per microwave.
Whether it was good luck that would serve, would would serve Northumberland.
Correct.
So that wouldn't, my, my understanding, that wouldn't upgrade King William or.
You check that with him in his presentation, that would include the upgrade he is. That would bring them all to work, where they could work together, where the new, put Northumberland, it was a newer version, would not work with theirs, what they have in service now.
Well, Sheriff, you still sold on what you and your committee came up with, right?
Yeah, I believe that is the best way. The committee has decided that's the best way forward. But, you know, if there's questions, if there's doubts, let's get them out, let's work them out. Because I'll say it again, we've had two near misses with deputies, and I don't want to be the one to come in and tell you that it wasn't a miss the next time.
And that's going to come at a higher price than the radio system.
Because I got a feeling I'm going to be on the hook for part of that.
Well, I'm here for what you and committee came up with. I mean, how many was on your committee?
Uh, eight, eight or nine, yeah.
Nine was yourself.
We had nine, I think one left, so I think we have eight. But, you know, it's, it's certainly no problem to get another proposal. It's just going to push, push our timeline and push our things down the road. I understand, you know, the the money aspect, I do.
That's what I want to, kind of get the most for the bang for the buck.
Right.
And that, that, and I want y'all to have what y'all need.
Okay.
So I'm going to put that in the form of a motion, and we seek other proposals on, stop, wait a minute, Johnny.
I can vote.
Request.
You don't want me to vote?
Yeah, request the sheriff to get other proposals on this type of radio system that he feels like the need is there for. The need and not the want. So I have a second to it. Don't need a second, I know it won't pass. All on the table, let it know we're saying aye, aye. All opposed.
Aye, aye.
Motion fails.
My concern was, we had Motorola, now I'm going to say it right now, we had Motorola last time. And I remember seeing ninety-five percent coverage in the whole county. One area wouldn't have it. I didn't understand why, down Pinecrest Acres, and I questioned that then. But we don't have what we were promised with them.
Well, according to federal engineering report, we do, got above and beyond what they promised.
Well, they promised.
Is that not the way you read the federal engineering report? Went above and beyond on all of them?
I'd have to go back and look. That was the first, the first report. The one that they announced.
The, the, the last one they did.
Yeah.
First report, stood out as the one that didn't do anything that suggested in that.
Correct.
But I know if we did not get what we wanted the first time. And I remember there was one call, the Foman Rescue Squad had. It was nineteen minutes before we ever got it, and I only found it because Calio got toned and up during a thunderstorm, on Christmas Eve, a thunderstorm, that kept us from getting the call and take care of it. So, I mean, we get all kinds of excuses, and I'm, I don't want to have to give an excuse, well, we, you didn't get it, and you have to make the, being on the hook. Yes, it's expensive, but.
Nobody's dipping the need. I'm not saying that. I didn't stick that at one second. I don't, the, the need, that something needs to be done. The sheriff has told us numerous times that he wants better coverage, and I do too, but I mean, I don't want anybody at any time to be where they don't have contact. But I just think this is something that's a big, big ticket item, not just jump on it, because it sounds good when you don't know what you're paying.
We still got to pay for it even to go with it. That, we haven't crossed that bridge yet.
Haven't even thought about that.
Well, that's something you got to think about, too.
And you don't know what is, you're going to buy.
But I would like.
That's actually a firm figure.
I would like to, and I'll make this in form of a motion, that we get, you get or whoever gets the cost of the microwave for it, since that is not part of Harris. We need to have a solid figure.
Yes, sir.
And I make that in form of a motion.
Alright, thank you, Sheriff. You ain't got nothing else to do?
I think you got a motion on the floor. You got a motion on the floor.
A motion on the floor.
Well, I thought you were going to put that in a motion. Alright, you got a motion on the floor. Did we get a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, let it know we're saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed?
We'll get that soon as I can get it to you. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Is anyone else have anything on the budget, anything before we convene in the closed meeting? No?
Alright, you do, go ahead. Um, I need the board to, uh, I need a motion from the board to convene in the closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, section two point two thirty-seven eleven, A one, for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters. Invited to attend the closed meeting is necessary the county minister and assistant county minister, because they are deemed necessary in their presence would reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia for you, section two point two thirty-seven twelve, have.
I so moved with what Tedlock said.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? Not all in favor, let it know we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. We're going to enter the closed meeting for a while and be back here hopefully by seven o'clock for the public hearing. Time. I guess we ought to take care of all this stuff first.
Yeah.
Need a motion?
I'm moved that we come back into open meeting.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it know we're saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, we need a motion.
Uh, yes, sir, I can read the statement uh for the certification. Uh, need a motion by the board supervisors to return to public meeting and certify by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
I'm, I'm moved with what Mr. Tedlock did.
Second. Motion second. Take a roll call vote. All in favor of motion? Jim?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Um, aye, and I vote aye.
Motion carried. Alright, just before we get started on our public hearing tonight, like, take a moment of silence now for the Texas children and teachers that lost their lives. We can have a moment of silence with that, please. Alright, thank you. For those of you who weren't here to begin another meeting, uh, Mr. Haney is absent tonight. He had a medical emergency at four o'clock with his mother, had to take her to the hospital. So uh, he won't be here to see me neither. Alright, a fresh public hearing of the night.
Mr. Jett?
Before we get started, could I get clarification on a couple of things in regarding um, ESSR funds?
Yeah.
Um, first, are these ESSR funds a grant? Is this a grant or is this um a relief fund to help maintain the schools?
They are the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds from the federal um related to COVID-related funds.
Okay, so first say it's not a grant.
They are, the funds are a little bit different than the way the, the county, the county receives those funds upfront. Um, I believe the school division receives those funds by reimbursement basis.
Okay, so like I said, not a grant. And the date for these funds to be spent is twenty twenty-four, correct?
That would, I'd have to confirm that with the school division. I'm not sure what their date is on the, the ESSR funds.
Okay, that's all I know. Well, they'd have to be, because if they were, the first round, they had to be extended by December the thirty, twenty twenty-one. At least on the county side, and I don't see any reason why different.
Turn that, someone from the school, though. Jason Lee?
Yes, sir.
Do you, did you hear what, um,
I did. Um, I believe that was in a packet that we sent over to you.
That's all I have.
Got you satisfied, haven't you? Alright, you going to have a public hearing, or are you only going with the?
Either way, I can, can read.
Good reading.
Um, public hearing tonight is for the fiscal year twenty-two budget amendment uh for the purpose of appropriating monies which are part of the elementary and secondary school emergency relief, S R three funding, various school grants and previously appropriated funds uh to be accounted for within the fiscal year twenty-two budget. Uh, the total budget amendment uh is two million, three, six hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars and twenty-three cent. Now, previously, um, in the uh resolution uh that was uploaded in board docs, the appropriation amount is higher than the budgeted amount, but that is due to some of the other funding uh related to S R two and portion of the S R three funding being budgeted but not appropriated at that time. So it, just wanted to clarify any confusion why the total budgeted amount is different than the appropriation amount. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Any board members have any questions, comments before we open the public hearing? Alright, at this time, we open the public hearing, and the first one I have signed up is Gavin Simpson.
That'd be me, sir.
Sir?
That, that would be me, sir.
Come just, come to the mic, you.
Oh.
Come right up here to my chair, speaking.
Give your name and address. Good afternoon, I'm Gavin Simpson, who wanted my address too.
Yeah.
I live at sixty-eight Crowder Point Drive in Reedville, Virginia. Just beginning speaking.
You want to speak on the subject?
So as far as I know, to my knowledge, this is, the money for this building is money that can only be used for this building. Yes? So I see this as an investment in the community. Let me tell you about some experiences I had from in athletics and in J R T C as well. In eighth grade, I wrestled and we had the field house to practice in. That was fine. It, it wa, it wasn't so much space, but we could do with that. This year, we had to practice in the auditorium. That was fine for a little, until they kicked us out of the auditorium, and we had to practice in the cafeteria. From there, every, every practice, we would have to take the tables and move them out, lay down the mats. Then at the end of practice, we'd pick up the mats and put the tables back. That would cost us about forty minutes of practice time. Now, we had a lot of first-year wrestlers, guys who, a lot of JV guys, so they wouldn't make it to states or regionals this year. But next year, they really could have used the extra training so that way we could send them to states and regionals. Not only that, and here's my other investment in this, it's J R T C. There are a few different programs we do in J R T C, one of them being drill, and that was the only one we could do this year. When you do drill, drill is, in my opinion, obsolete in modern militaries. However, its importance is that it teaches, it teaches people to move as a unit. It teaches them to focus and it teaches them to be united and cohesive. Because of that, you, excuse me, so when we practiced drill, when we were marching, we would be in the gym. Again, this is not a problem. However, we would have to share the gym with the P E classes. So every once in a while, as we were marching, stray balls and stuff would come into our zone. Not only that, but there is the issue that when we are practicing for drill, for competition, that you have to follow a that you have to follow a certain sequence, as in it cannot be modified by the squad or company or platoon leader. When you follow this sequence, sometimes we would bleed into the other side of the gym and cause a bit of a disruption. This building here would allow us to practice our drill in peace, which would therefore allow us to get better at it, which would therefore allow us to win more competitions, therefore bringing more notoriety, for lack of a better term, to our school. Also, not only that, but we also have, of the other programs which we were unable to do, there is archery. By having this building, we would be allowed to set up a range and practice archery, we would also be able to work on physical conditioning more now that we would be alone. I believe that's all I have to say.
Okay, that's fine, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next one I have signed up, a little bit trying to read last name, maybe Stuart or Scott.
While I appreciate the seeming importance of a, I'm sorry, Lynn Stewart, I'm from Lutzburg. I understand the importance of having a place for our outstanding students to practice and drill and shoot archery. My concern is that these SR3 funds that will build the building will not maintain that building or add services to that building and pay for them over the long term. I went to the US Census and I looked and I, and I compared, I, I did a comparison of Westmoreland, Lancaster, and Northumberland, since those are the comparisons that are typically made in the budgets. When we're talking about salaries, when we're talking about number of students, what the cost per student per county are. Northumberland has the lowest population under the age of five. It has the lowest population under the age of 18. It has the highest population of over 65. It has the highest owner cost of homeownership. It has the highest gross rent number. It has the second highest poverty level of those three counties. It has the lowest number of employer establishments and it has the lowest annual payroll of Westmoreland, Lancaster, and Northumberland comparisons. My concern is not whether or not a building would be wonderful and good and rainbows and unicorns. My concern is that if this building and its ongoing operations, understanding that the physical bricks and mortar will be built by federal money, someone's going to have to maintain it and it has to be staffed, and that, those monies will come out of our pockets. And if this building and its ongoing operations require an increase in taxes, we're talking about a rather poor county comparatively that will have to gather their monies together and hand them over. And that's my concern, not that the building wouldn't be a wonderful thing, but that the ongoing operations, staffing, utilities, drilling of wells, maintenance of air conditioning units, all of that is an ongoing cost to the members of this county and those SR funds are not going to be here forever. So when the consideration is made whether or not to build this building, how many square feet? Is it two stories, is it one story? Is it a square, is it a rectangle, is it a pyramid? I don't know. I don't know, but the citizens of this county are going to be responsible in a big way for maintenance of this building and if it means that taxes are going to be increased, not many people are going to be happy about it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Alex Wormley?
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Alexis Wormley. I live at 2530 Brown St. Road. I'm wondering why, and I, I don't say this to insult anybody, but we're having a discussion on funds to further our kids in the community's education and development. Now, as a kid that grew up on the hard streets of North New Jersey, who had an outlet of JROTC and, and other outlets and went on to become a Marine and a Marine Corps vet, JROTC is very important to every child that wants to be a part of that program. And like Gavin said, one thing that program needs is space. Now, one thing I'll backtrack on you Gavin is when you say drill is obsolete and a lot of Marine Corps, we focus on a lot of drill. But things that are important is space. And as, and as a parent and as a volunteer and as an employee that has been around the school system, they have no space. They have to share the gym at times. And one thing about drilling, you need your space. One thing about anything to do with ROTC out that classroom, you need your own space. And I've watched numerous kids use this program and go on to succeed. I've watched numerous kids have a complete turnaround just from our JROTC. You know, uh, my own son is a living example. I'm not going to tell this story, I don't want to bring back old memories, but it's people in here that know, know my son's story. And let me tell you something, JROTC has gave him a complete 60. Science, technology, engineering, and math. STEM. Why is that even a question to build and have space for a STEM program? These kids are what's going to keep this world going because we're not going to be able to do it forever. If we have the funds, let me tell you something, if I have to pay taxes so these kids can be our future, where do I sign up? If I have to, where do I sign up? I'll be the first one to put my name on the list. I don't care how many kids we have under the age of what, what, what these kids deserve as best education as anybody else in the world. If we have the money to provide them the space for their education, let's give it to them. Bottom line, athletic program. We have so many talented kids in this community and I'll be the first to brag right now. My son is Cameron Selvin. Cameron Selvin is my son. Everybody knows who he is, number two wide receiver in the state. Athletic programs need space too, because we practice on fields and as a volunteer coach, we practice on fields that, that barely movement can be on. You know, we share fields. The ba, the basketball team share courts. You know, all these programs are important to the development of the youth, starting from elementary school on up. And if we have money allocated that we have a certain amount of time to use that's saying, hey, you can have this money, get this building, get up, if we have to maintain it for 20 years paying our taxes, why not? Because it's going to develop and send these kids off into the world to be better adults. We're going to keep them from out of getting in trouble because people like me volunteer in this community to stop that. People like me making a purpose to protect, I call them babies because they are my babies, whether they're 18, 19, or 20. But I'm one to take up the mantle to protect these babies and programs like that protect these babies. Education, guidance, mentorship, protect these babies. I tell chief all the time, if I could, if I could work as an ROTC instructor, I sure enough would. Unfortunately, I'm a disabled veteran, I'm not a retired veteran. Because I watch young men, young ladies of all cultures, all backgrounds. Just, just amazing. We have so many scientists, technologists, engineers, everything in the making. They deserve to have that environment to develop their craft, to develop their trade, to develop their mind. Our athletes, they deserve to, to be able to display their talent the best they can with, with the things that they need. So I'm not, I'm not going to drag this along. Like I say, if I, if, if I have to come out my pocket and pay taxes every year for it, where do I sign up? That's it. You know, I say we give them the building, they more than deserve it. We have a problem in the community, I think this will help the community. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, I'm Susan Titus.
How are you tonight?
I'm good. I live in Reedville and I'm a real estate agent with Cobblestone Realty. And this is only relevant because over the last two years, I have brought a lot of families into Northumberland County. And a lot of them are young, a lot of them haven't started having their children yet, but they want to be here now that everybody can work almost virtually. They want to be here for the quality of life and the schools. And that's no small statement because a lot of them are coming from areas like Loudoun County, Richmond, Fairfax County, Pennsylvania, New York, New Jersey, where the school systems are excellent. So they see something in the schools here. We have a one-time opportunity to build this building with, with these ESF funds. And I would venture to say, given the way things are going with materials right now, it's a lot less expensive to maintain a building than it will be to build it if you put this off several years and this opportunity goes away. So I also understand that from surrounding counties, some students can opt where they'd like to attend the school based on programs or direction of study. So I don't think that this is a limited building, you know, if you look at the, the data on children ages here and things now, it's going to change, it is changing, and children from other counties may opt to come here too, depending on the STEM programs that are offered. And I will echo the sentiment of the gentleman that spoke. Our taxes here are very reasonable and I would rather put a little more money in my taxes to support education where we're going to keep talent in this county, which will continue to support this county as we go forward. There's innovations that are coming in all different fields that might apply here and different types of agriculture. There's just so many things that Northumberland County can benefit from without losing the quality of life, but you have to have the space and the facilities to start this community of kids going forward. Excuse me, I got this one out, I want to land on the floor. So I would just like to, as my personal statement, I would love to see this get approved and I would love to see the budget get approved so we can keep the teachers we have. It's been very stressful for the last two years on the teachers with remote learning, in-person learning, kids who've kind of gotten lazy because of the back and forth. And we need to keep the teachers we have here because they have drawn a lot of people to this area and hopefully will support the benefit of this county and the continuation of the wonderful quality of life we have here.
What was your last name, ma'am?
Titus, T-I-T-U-S. Thank you.
Thank you. Rafael Vega?
Hey, good evening, my name is Rafael Vega, I'm from Williamsburg, Virginia. I would like to take a moment to kind of give you background on myself, kind of, kind of introduction. On Sunday, I was fortunate in that year, I had the, the blessing to be able to serve with a special operation unit, a special mission unit, as well as NATO and working under the Secretary of the Army as well as NATO, inspecting country, military human resources, country that want to be part of NATO, and developing policy that related to the program in which I have, I've been employed today. So I had the, the, the opportunity, worked with great leaders such as General Austin, who is today is the Secretary of Defense, as well as General Bear, Peter Bear, who is the Vice President Opensky, Operational Division on the, on the East Coast. So I have worked with great leaders, but I can attest today that in my experience, Northumberland School Board Administration is second to none. It's second to none. Because my experience with every, every decision and initiative is centered on the welfare of the staff, but more importantly, safety and development of students. And that's the reason we're here today. It's interesting, the, the, we call this a building, instead of becoming a optimist optimization strategy. We try to optimize, optimize education. I do believe that's what extra space is. This is not just extra space, it's optimization. Could you advance this next slide, please? Next, please. What the school board administration presented to you is a capability. It is a capability that will enable the Northumberland High School and Middle School to be, to be able to maintain the, um, relevant and diverse educational and career development readiness of the school. But also allow the school and the county to be able to respond, not only to the federal government and the state government initiative in regard to technology and engineer, but also be able to align the program in the school with the top 10, at least the top 10 universities in the country. Because about technology engineer. On 2022, under the Public Law 117-81, the National Defense Act Authorization approved $187 million, $187 million dedicated to the JROTC STEM program. Recently, Virginia State Education, Education, Department of Education allocating $10 million for five years to technology and CTE program. That's indicative that the plan that being proposed to you, it is one that is urgent to us to maintain the relevant of Northumberland. Ladies and gentlemen, I was, I grew up on a place where we had nothing. Education was not the best and crime increased because there was nothing for us to, to look forward. More importantly, as we move forward, if Northumberland does not have the capability and the ability to respond to the program that the federal government or the state initiative promote, I can guarantee you, we will lose a lot of funding for the, for both, for the federal and the state program as well. The only way to grow, the only way to promote, to grow a community is just continue to be investing in the future of the youth. That's the only way. Yes, we, we, we may have a great percentage of adult, but like I heard earlier, the lady that I spoke earlier, we got people moving in. Ladies and gentlemen, I live on Williamsburg and it's worth it every single day, driving an hour and 40 minutes one way to come, to come to Northumberland. That's the one reason why. Safety, security of the school. Plus, the, the, the relevant program that the school have. Now, next slide, please. The decision that we are reviewing today right now is affecting 25% of the students who are down the school, 25% of the students. That's with a space, it would have the resources. That's 25% of the student that was not available to get the, the education that they need to be competitive on the market. Ladies and gentlemen, my Battalion Commander for JROTC is right here, he's an engineer, going to the engineer program. She had that opportunity during the time that was on, 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 on Northumberland. We created that opportunity because we're not talking about space, we're talking about capability, opportunity. So that 25% can be positively improved because right now, like Mr. Gavin mentioned, the Department of Army has funded eight programs for JROTC, only able to do two. Two, because I don't have the space. Part of the JRC, JRC program, program that funded by the federal government is STEM and which include technology, robotic, drone, cyber, is funded by the Department of the Army. I cannot do this program because I don't have the capability, we had the ability, we had, we had the ability, but not the capability to do so because like a space. So eventually, that number could change to 25%, but that 25% is impacting the student negatively because they don't get the development that they need. Because every program of, of technology or engineer that are going to be in that building, it is part of the integrated curriculum. It's not a just activity, it's part of the integrated curriculum. Right now, our program is like this, let me give you a sample, our program is like us having a, a driver education program for the student. Our program is like us having a driver education program for the student, but we don't have vehicle to teach how to drive. That's what we are right now. We're teaching something based on notion. So I would like for everybody to consider that because it is a great impact. Next slide, please.
Mr. Vega, hold up a second. You don't know his timeline, but is satisfactory with the board to let him continue?
I will be closing now. Now, ladies and gentlemen, this is the only question that I ask. I'm asking you to, as you proceed to adjourn on a made-up decision, to please don't take away the human aspect. We're concentrating in tax and money, but we need to understand the human aspect. Those programs, what that those programs do for those kids, almost 90% of the kids that come to the school that have a perception of being inadequate, not competent. The majority of those programs allow them to sell self-efficient. So let me give you a story as I close. Two years ago, a candidate with the name of Emily Burgess created the motto for that class. The motto is, "We deserve better, accept nothing less than excellence." The motto is something that we use to describe our first phone conviction. When I asked her, "Why do you say we deserve better? What does that mean?" You know what she did? She took me to a preamble. I hear, it's a chief, read that sentence. I said, "Sense this way, to promote the welfare and secure the blessing or liberty to our self and our posterity." You know what she told me? "Chief, I am your posterity, and you should remain defending the opportunity that's given to us." All they need is an opportunity. That's what he asking you today, giving opportunity to the student. There's no value, there's no money that could buy a kid that when he go to our program and say, "I don't looking forward to seeing another day," but months later say, "I see reality of life." So what I'm going to ask you, our decisions on my building, our decisions about life. So I want to ask you that hopefully you make a decision, unanimous decision, that positively impact our kid. Thank you.
All right, next in here is Jay Lightfoot.
I feel bad following that one, but I'm Jay Lightfoot. I live in Reedville, Virginia. I'm also a teacher at Northumberland High School. In fact, I am the Chair of the CTE Department. I'm honored to work with people like Chief Vega. I think there are three facets to this I'd like to talk about. First off, people. Steve Jobs once said, "It makes no sense to hire smart people and then tell them what to do." We hire smart people and we have them tell us what to do. I think that applies in this case. I think the people we're talking about, I think we can all agree, are very smart people. People like Dr. Worgen, people like Dr. Burns, people like Chief Vega, people we know, people who've been in our system for many years, people like Chief Jeff Braun, who's our facility manager. I think we need to listen to what they're saying to us. And what they're saying to us is, "We need this facility, and this facility will enable us to go further with our program." I think the second thing we need to think about is our program in general. Let's admit it, we're a small school system. But as Mr. Dickens routinely says, "We punch above our weight all the time." We do a lot of things and we work very hard to be very creative and provide a very good education. I do agree with what Mr. Braun was quoted in the paper as saying recently, is that not every student wants to take a drone or robotics course. I'll be teaching the drone class, by the way. I think we tend to fall in over the technology a little bit, but a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Dickens and I went to Virginia Tech, who actually is one of the leading universities in drone development and the drone program. And you know what they told us? They said, "It's not about the drones. It's not about going out and flying drones because people get bored with that in about a week. It's about the applications and what you can do with this technology." It's the fact that we're talking to the Sheriff's Department and they want to use drones to find missing people. It's the fact that we're talking to the fire departments and how they want to use drones to scope out fires, brush fires. It's about the fact that real estate agents want to use drones to film new properties that are coming on board. It's about the fact that some of our major employers here want to use drones to cut costs. That's what we're talking about, the applications for this technology and how we can train our children to use that technology. Couple of years ago, I saw a statistic that said in 10 years, it is estimated that 30% of the jobs that are available do not exist right now. What that means is we have got to get creative and we have got to teach these children this new technology because that's going to enable them to adapt and to get these new jobs because we're not going to be getting those jobs, it's them. So I think we have to think about how we enable our program to be in a position to teach the children those skills. And I think the last thing I'd like you to think about is our facility. In the early 2000s, some very wise people in this community invested heavily in our future when they built three new school buildings. If you look at this region, we have the newest and the best facilities in this region. We are the envy of every school system. Now, Washington Lee is in the process of building a new school, and we know Lancaster's been trying to build a new school for how long? Well, guess what? We have new schools. We have the best facilities that are here, and what we're talking about is making it better, adding more space, giving ourselves more flexibility, and continuing the excellence we already have. So I think those are the things we should think about. So in summary, I'd like you to think about, let's trust our people, let's listen to our people, and let's trust what our people are saying and the job they're telling us to do. Let's enable the future of our program and where we're trying to go, and let's further invest in our facility, and let's get it done now while we have the chance. Thank you.
Dara Downing.
My name is Dara Downing, and I am the Battalion Commander from the JRTC. This program has allowed me to do so many things. I just graduated last weekend and on to going to VMI to do the Mechanical Engineering Program. I would not have been able to do that had not been for the help of JRTC. When I was in this program for nine, or four years now, since ninth grade, and it has allowed me to be, I'm more comfortable talking in front of people. I would not have been here four years ago, speaking in front of everybody, not a chance. More comfortable speaking in front of people. I have developed more leadership skills. We've done drill teams, and I've led some of them. This building would allow us to actually have drill practice. When we have it, if it rains and the sports teams need the gym, we lose the gym. It could be two days before a competition and we'd lose the gym, didn't matter. We had no priority over any of those school programs. And I played sports with Northern, I played field hockey, soccer, and indoor track. Our indoor track team had to practice outside. There could be snow on the track, and we'd just shovel it off and then run. Didn't matter, 30 degrees, 20 degrees, didn't matter, we were outside. This new gym would allow us to be inside during indoor track, and that's one of the sports. We go, there's no other schools around here that have that program, but we enjoy it here. It's being able to run. We have to go far places, run there, but we're going from an outside facility and we have to run inside, doesn't matter where we go. We're running outside the week before, two days before, then we're going to go inside and it's a whole different feel. We had one home meet for indoor track, which was outside, of course, but we've got to shovel the track just to be able to practice. For field hockey and soccer, if we don't get, let's say, boys soccer needs the gym, we lose it. Or let's say, football needed the gym, we lost it automatic. It just, we needed another space. One more space would have allowed us to have practices days before games, which would have led us to go further. Field hockey and soccer both made it to regionals this year, and we missed a couple of practices because we lost priority to the gym. We didn't have enough football or basketball or whatever got this gym before us. We lost all those things. And for JRTC, losing the gym before competition can make the difference between placing first and losing altogether. It's such an important to have that little practice because one more practice, one more hour with everybody working together, just gets the timing right, the unison right. You just do so much better, you're more confident, and you lose that all when you don't have those practices. Now, leadership skills, we've been doing a lot of stuff in the school, in the classroom, but that's not the same as being able to go out to the gym. We have three gym classes we have to compete with. There's three classes that we have, and then when we go in there, it's four, to share one gym. It's not enough space for anybody. And this next building would have the space so the gym class could have the gyms, and we could also have our own space to march, or archery, or whatever we wanted to do for that day, physical training, it didn't matter, we'd have the space to do it and we wouldn't have to work around the other gym classes. If the gym class wanted to play basketball, we didn't have the space to go. It's just, we lost so much time and ability to do all these programs we would love to do in JRTC because we didn't have the space to do them. Those programs make such a difference. The ability to have been able to do some of these things this year would have helped me so much going into my future. I applied for some of the service academies. I'm on waitlist on one of them, but I would never have been able to go that far. I would never have considered going VMI when I joined ninth grade. Joined the JRTC program, I built up my confidence, my leadership skills, and physical fitness because I was not physically fit. It'd have been bad, I wouldn't have been able to finish the mile. Now I'm confidently running longer distances, and that's all because of Chief Vega helping me. He stayed over the summer last year to help me do all these things so I could do better. And it just helps so much to have people who would be willing to do that and also the space to do it. We have new equipment in the weight room, which helps a lot, but to have a space to do it because gym classes and all of those other classes are trying to go and do those spaces too. We just lose so much of our skills and abilities because we don't have the space.
Dara, the effects I would already shown on you.
Hello, I'm Suzanne Smart. I'm a resident of Heesville. There seems to be a lot of emotion around this decision, which is the decision to build an expansion of a building at the schools. Previously, there's been a lot of emotion over teacher salaries and over extracurricular activities in the school system for the children. While these are all very good things, we want excellent teachers, we want a good school building, we love extracurricular programs. The JRTC program, I know, is a wonderful program. Sports are important. But there are other things that I think that I and others in the community would like to see a similar level of emotion and passion about in education. A desire to impart knowledge to the next generation. A desire for our teachers to be able to show and teach children how to think for themselves, not what to think, but how to think, how to logically put things together and come to their own conclusions instead of being told what to say, what to think. My question would be, to the school system, to the school board, what is your budget for the gifted program? What are your test scores? What's happened to SOL scores? Does anyone know? I can tell you, because I contacted the Virginia Department of Education, they aren't good. In many categories, more than half of our students do not pass reading. They are not able to pass the SOLs in reading. To me, that is atrocious, and that is what we ought to be passionate about, about education, about educating the children that are in school, educating the next generation. These are our future leaders for our country and for our community. I agree that STEM is really important as well. Drones are a very cool technology, and robots are too. I understand there's concerns about where to store robots. All of these things are extras, and they are wonderful, but I think that we have a tendency to get away from what is the main thing. And I think the main thing is that our students learn how to read, they learn how to do math, they learn how to think for themselves, they learn how to be able to come up and speak in front of an audience, which these students do a wonderful job of doing. There seem to be very many unanswered questions regarding this proposed building expansion. If you, as members of the board, have any unanswered questions regarding the specifics of this, such as, "What's the square footage? How many windows are there going to be? What is the HVAC system going to be like? Is there going to be telecom in each of these rooms? How much? Electrical connections in each of these rooms? How much?" If you have any questions that remain unanswered or unclear, you cannot in good conscience vote for this budget amendment. I would urge you, as board members, to not give in to high-pressure tactics. Once the school board has this dollar figure in their budget and approved, the school board will expect the same amount in future years, as well as increases to take care of the new facility. I also would like to add that this is ongoing expense for what I believe is 57 students. The enrollment is about 1,157 students are involved in the program. Based on the information I have seen that is available, this addendum to the county budget is not in the best interest of the county residents, nor in the taxpayers of Northumberland County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all I have signed up. Is anyone else that likes to speak on this matter? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Sabrina. And I just want to say-
Just state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sabrina Conley. I live in Heesville. I just want to say, it's a wonderful idea. Those kids is going to love that. My daughter got a letter from school, said she was accepted in the STEM program. She excited, she can't wait to go some school, because she's ready to go. She's ready to learn about this technology. I think it's good for them, I think it will keep them out of trouble, it will keep them out of the streets, it will be a place for them to go after school. It's not only will be a space for them, but it will help improve health, fitness. It will help strengthen their minds, their hearts, their ability to learn and to absorb. Yeah, outside could be hot, cold, I think this extra building will be great for the kids. Because health is important to me, and I really think this new building will give them an opportunity to go in a cool place, in a bigger place, and just for them to just fellowship together and practice. I really truly believe that each one of you tonight would just look deep down in your hearts and see what the good it would do for the kids. And all the other stuff will fall in, it will work itself out, because God said it will, you got to lean on them. We need change. Northumberland County needs change, and it starts with the kids. The kids will love this, and I have no doubt in my mind that this would be a good project for our kids. Thank you.
My name is Richard Saxer, and I live in Reedville. My adult life has been spent in education. I started as a teacher, Title III Director. In those days, it was how to improve education, an elementary principal, a superintendent, chairman of the New Jersey Governor's School. When I was told I had less than six months to live, I retired. The doctors took another look, and then I was Department Chairman of Education in a college in New Jersey. When my wife and I moved here, I ran for the Board of Education, and I smeared the opposition. There was none. I ran unopposed. The next time I ran against Gail Sturrock, and she not only beat me, but she smeared me. And I want to make it very clear, some of the questions that were asked tonight belong at a school board meeting, not at a board of supervisors meeting. That money is not coming out of your pocket directly, it's federal funds. Somebody, some district is going to get that money. We will use it here to the betterment of education and the betterment of our children. We're not going to ask for the same money next year because it's a one-time thing. And I have seen places where we practice, having been on the board and so forth, horrible. This will be a terrific thing for everybody, and will be a bright shining star in our community. So I urge you to vote yes.
Hello, board.
Hello, board. My name is Dr. Carol A. Crockett, and I came on the last meeting, and I'm here on this meeting as well to speak on behalf of this wonderful project that JROTC is trying to implement. If you all could be there in the school to see Chief Vega and Sergeant Lummens and the students and how they perform and all the energy that these two men put into these young people to make them productive citizens. To know how to perform in life and go forward in life and to speak and to be intelligent. One of these days, being able to serve in the United States Army or anywhere they choose to serve when it comes to the military forces. I say to you on today that you have some dynamic and extraordinary educators in the Northumberland County Public School Systems. We do all that we can do, from special education to the English department, to the gifted department, and so forth, to make our students the best students that they ever could be. When people say that they cannot, we say that they can. And for the students that I work with, this is one thing that I use with them, and they are special ed children. You are not determined by your disabilities, but you're determined by your capabilities. And that's because of the great educators that we have at Northumberland County Public School Systems. So we say to you on today, listen to the voices of the children. The children. We are not living in stone ages anymore. Technology will, technology is a part of the world today. And Northumberland has to move with the world. We have to step with the world. When the world steps, we have to step. And so when our children go in to other areas of life, and they say, where did you come from? We want them to be proud to say, I am from Northumberland County. This is where I received my educational background. And so I say to you on today, don't worry about taxes because we're gonna pay them anyways. You know, whether it be for this building, or whether it be for land and property, or real estate, or personal property, we're gonna pay the taxes. And all we say to you today is, look at the children. They are the future. They are the world today. They'll be our future educators. They will step into the shoes that we are stepping in now, and they will go forth and do what we do. So be encouraged, make the right decision, and the last thing I have to say is this, think about the children. They are our future.
Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am. No, you spoke once and you, no, we limited one, one speaking per time. Just, you spoke earlier on it, though, didn't you? Yeah, just one time is all you're allowed to speak, public hearing. Yes, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
As opposed to speaking, I have a question if I may. The Northumberland County Public, or the Northumberland County Budget has been approved for 2022-2023. Is that correct?
No.
No, no, no.
Fiscally, your 23 budget is not.
For the, the, the one that is beginning July 1st has not been approved.
That's correct. It has not been approved.
And when does the board expect to approve that budget?
Before July the 1st.
Before July the 1st, so the day it starts is the day we approve it?
No, it will be before then. That's all we can say. The General Assembly hasn't done their duty either.
I don't understand what that means.
Because a lot of the school funding is through them too.
Which means you haven't received their figure.
No.
Okay. The concern seems, the major concern seems to be future costs for this particular building and costs above and beyond boots-on-the-ground construction. As opposed to the concern of raising taxes to pay for those future costs, what is the ability of the county to apportion, even a small portion, of its surplus specifically devoted to future costs? Which would alleviate the taxpayers' concern of some sort of crazy tax increase for the purposes of, I don't know, cutting the grass around the building or whatever future cost they seem to think comes from a big metal building sitting on grounds that are already taken care of. What is the ability of the board to apportion the $7 million, or at least a small portion of $7 million surplus to future costs? Is that a potentially viable option to alleviate the taxpayers' concern?
This is not really a question and answer period. I mean, it's, it's a thing. It's public hearing to make your, state your views on the public hearing before us.
So then make it a procedural question. Is that something that the county is able to do or to entertain?
That is a question that I can't answer, and I don't think any board member can answer.
Well enough.
This is a group, group decision. Is anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
We didn't get her name. We didn't get the name. Thank you.
Anyone else? I don't know. Do you have anybody, Morgan, in the virtual world? We have one more, one young lady.
My name is Ryanne Pearson. I live in Calio, Virginia, and the point I would like to make is
If you pull your mic up a little bit there.
Sorry, I'm a bit tall. As leadership in JRC, I feel like it is very important to have this space open because I am in part of color guard and drill, and I enjoy these very much, but we, we need space to do these things. Because moving tables in the cafeteria and stepping on french fries is exactly a way to practice. Sorry, I'm a little nervous, but we definitely need more space because, like Chief Vega said, we have two out of our eight programs that we are, have the ability to do. We should have the ability to do a lot more than that. We want our kids to grow up in our society because we are putting them out in the world, and we want them to have as much ability to do whatever they want as much as we can. So we want more space for these kids because I wish to learn. I may be young, but I wish to learn a lot more. Because Chief Vega has really inspired me to do all of these things because if you told me a year ago, I would be speaking in front of you, I would cry. But they have inspired me to actually speak my mind about things in the most respectful manner I possibly can. So I really think we need more room to do such. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Morgan. Do we have anybody in the virtual world standing by?
Can everyone hear me?
There is a person.
Hello?
Hello, hello.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, good. Hi, my name's Stephanie Crockston, and I'm gonna echo the last young woman. I'm very nervous. I don't speak in front of people even when I'm not there. But I just, I am a Northumberland County resident. I have children. Well, I have one child in Northumberland County Schools. I'm about to have two. I'm obsessed with my teachers and staff. The school has been amazing. I just, I find it concerning that because questions are being asked, it's kind of being misconstrued that they're, that people are against children or against programs that would further their education, and, and I, I don't, I don't think that's correct. All the presentations that were given tonight are wonderful. These children getting up and speaking, I think that's fantastic. I want my children to have that confidence someday. I want them to participate in JROTC. The building sounds great. I, I think, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with asking questions, which is all that's been done. Whatever future costs there may be, as a taxpayer, it is my money, and to simply ask a question as to how that's gonna be handled in the future, I don't think that should be deemed that I'm against children. I'm against education. Just asking questions. We're raising a generation of children to ask questions, so we kind of have to pave the way on this one and ask our own questions, teach them how to ask questions. Why? That's all that's being done. I don't think it's fair for either side to get personally offended at the questions being asked. That's, that's, that's all I really had. Like, of course, nobody's against children. That's kind of, that, that's a little much. But the building sounds fantastic. If it's feasible, do it. I mean, the boards need to communicate and work out, find the common ground between the needs and the numbers, and then move forward. That's pretty much all I had to say. I rambled.
Hello?
Hello.
Good evening, guys. Carl Perez, Galley, I'm at this church pastor. Most of the questions I've been asked have been great questions, but most of them have already been answered through the scope of what the school board has put out for the community to actually listen to and to look at. If it hooes us to not wait to the last minute to look at what those details are, but to be ahead of the game by looking at those things ahead of time. One thing that concerns me is that we look at the idea and the process of another building. People are building every day because technology is building every day. It's nothing new to us. The longer we wait, the more expensive it becomes. I.e., we're still waiting for a new school board building. That hasn't come up yet. One, two, we're still waiting for the bank building to be fixed for the school building that is now currently being occupied as a school building. The more we wait, the more expensive it costs. We had an elementary school that leaked for over seven years. It's been on Capitol campaign plan for over those seven years, and it finally got done, but yet hasn't been paid for yet because the appropriations of the money is in the SR funds, which you have yet to approve. Once again, seven years of a leaky building. We need things in order for us to continue to educate, but also to continue to move our county forward. The longer we wait, the more expensive it, it becomes, and we know that because we keep saying, well, wait, well, wait, well, wait. Well, five years later, seven years later, we pay twice as much as if we just didn't go ahead and deal with the problem as it is. Today, we have the great option of having SR funds that cover the cost of the building, along with someone who donated money. Covers the whole building without a cent for us to have to pitch into, except for maintenance at the end of that. That's it. That's it. We receive more of the benefit than what we're arguing about, or what we're questioning about, or what we're looking at. Let's do what's right. We figured that low-income kids, guess where they go into? The military. That is their one out into a world outside of poverty. Look at our numbers. We receive free and reduced funds for a reason. It's not because we're just a great county there. We have students who are willing and able. We have mentors who are there. We have teachers that are there. We have people who are ready to make sure that what we have is taken care of, and it's to the best of the ability. I'm grateful for our school board. Maybe instead of downing them, we should encourage them. And I know that because I've seen some of our board members, particularly one, at Anna's downgrade our board in front of other people who are at Anna's restaurant, Tom Tomlin. So maybe y'all need to start talking versus talking about each other, talking to each other. Why don't y'all talk with each other? It makes it look more simple and more clean-cut versus downing each other, and we always have to come to this place where we have to argue, fuss, and fight over something that should be so simple. So simple. Let's do what's right. Let's keep moving. Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else in the virtual world? Okay, if not, the public hearing, or close the public hearing. If closed, not a support of the board.
Uh, this is Tyler. How soon can we vote on this matter?
This is not like the public hearing for your budget, uh, the regularly, regularly scheduled budget public hearing. Uh, the board could take action on this item at any time.
The date?
Yes, sir.
The only question is, we're down one board member.
Right, I'm gonna turn the motion.
And to be honest, the worst vote would be a 2-2. Then if by a parliamentary procedure, it's a dead vote, nobody can reconsider it. So, I'm not saying that's how it's gonna go, but that would be the worst case.
Turn the motion to carry it over to
I would hate to see that happen. I move that we carry it over to, to next, next Thursday when we have the public hearing on everything.
We have it. I don't want to put a date on it because I don't know. Richard Moss.
Neither. Well, I wanna, I'm saying we continue it to next Thursday.
If he's not here.
Well, so, uh, we have a meeting on the, uh, the second, right?
Right.
During the second?
Right.
So it's
That's what it's made the motion for.
So if the other board member is here, we can, we can vote on it then.
Yeah. That's what Thomas' motion is.
That's your motion, Tom?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Motion and second. So, any further discussion?
No further discussion. All in favor, let it know by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Everybody understand, right, what we're doing? Yeah, but, you know, you, you, listen. We don't want to take a chance of it coming out 2-2 and let it dead forever. So I, I was referring for us to have a full board to be safe. Huh? I can't do that. Can't do that. I'm 100% for it, and I don't want to lose it. So I, I say, uh, this is the best decision.
All right, do you have anything else that stands up?
I do not have anything else.
And the board, other board members have anything?
So the, uh, the during the second
Turn the motion, carry it over until June 2nd?
At 5:30. 5:30.
5:30. Right. Put that in the motion note?
Yes, sir.
Second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Not all in favor, let it know by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all for coming and all of your